The world around us is hostile to the word of God and biblical values. But we are called to be salt and light, to stand for truth in a decaying culture. We are not called to run from the fire, but be willing to step into the fire. God has placed you at this time in history on purpose and for a purpose. Join us as we get better equipped to address civics and culture from a biblical worldview. Welcome to Into the Fire powered by Dream City Church. Let's welcome our hosts Allison Furno and Debbie Vandenboe.
Today's topic is school boards, friend or foe? With a special guest, a Scottsdale School Board member, Amy Carney. Amy, thank you for coming on the show today.
Oh, thank you so much for having me.
So I want to dive right into this because we have a lot to talk about. Can you start off with what is a school board member and what is their role?
Well, that's a great question, right? I think before 2020, not many of us knew that, including myself. Having six kids in public school, I couldn't have told you what a school board member did or who was even on our school, local school board. So we have to realize that those that we elect on our school boards in our public schools hold a lot of power and they make a lot of decisions. And some of those decisions are the budget. We approve everything, every, well, I wouldn't say every, but we're supposed to be approving the money spent and what it's being spent on. We approve curriculum, so we approve what's going into the classroom, what teachers are allowed to use to teach. We hire and fire, evaluate the superintendent, so it's huge. We have one employee and that's the superintendent and we are to kind of be over, over he or she. We also, very important, we develop policies, so kind of our laws, if you say, of the school district. And so that's, those are some of our major roles that we, that we have as a school board member.
That's awesome. So there's five board members in each district.
In Arizona, correct?
In Arizona, yes. And there are school board meetings. So those are super popular amongst the, you know, the social media realm and everything. Like you said, kind of after the last couple of years, everybody was like, whoa, what are these school board meetings? And so what happens at those meetings? And I don't know, how do people interact? I think it's super interesting.
Yeah, it is super interesting. I hope it gets more interesting and we get more people involved because we still don't see near enough people coming to learn and educate themselves. And I think that's the key is, you know, it doesn't have to be a reality show, right? We don't have to make this, you know, a big extravaganza. It's just come and learn what's going on in your community. Come and learn, who are your school board members? And if they're representing you, if you, you know, just to come and learn what curriculum is being adopted, you know, a lot of times your board is split with how people feel. So come and see who you more align with, who you agree with. And like I said, learn. I think so, so often we're, we're so busy that we just don't have the time. We can do a lot better things with our Tuesday nights, right?
Right.
But I think that we have learned that through, through COVID and everything else, how important it is that we know what's going on in our local schools. I mean, taxpayers are funding these schools. So if you own a home in that area, you are paying for this, for this school and for the education there. And so it doesn't matter if you have kids in the school. I'm sure everyone cares about kids, right? They're our future. So we need to invest in them, invest in them wisely. And so just, yeah, you can easily find your school district online. Look up when their school board meeting is, it's always online. Show up there and start educating yourself. And I guarantee you, once you come, once you want to keep coming because you won't believe it a lot of times, what's going on.
And I think, I think what you're saying is really important. A couple of things that I just want to tag on to is that you don't have to have kids in that school.
Right.
I know people who there, they live in that school district, but their kids are homeschooled or whatever, or they may not, their kids may be grown. You may eventually have grandkids in that school district, but also they are developing your future citizens of our city, of our state. What they're teaching them and how they're developing those is important as a community for us to know what's going on in those school boards and how they're using our taxpayer money. And I think it's important too, we talk about this a lot, that you and I talk about this a lot, Allison, but that those local level of politics are the easiest way to really have an impact. Because if you're talking about a school district, that's very local. That's really just in your area, your neighborhood, school is, is very intimate, the geographic area. And so it's important to know who's there and you can build relationships with, with the people that are on the school board, with the teachers, with the superintendent, whoever that is, right? That it's a lot easier to access those people than it is to access someone at the state level.
Right. And I think something too is we, you know, if you're listening right now and you have felt helpless in the space of getting involved, you're like, I don't know what to do. I don't know where to go. Going to a school board meeting is the simplest, easiest thing you can walk in and just listen and learn. And it's so empowering to understand how it works, right?
Yeah, and I think that's an important piece of it too. You don't have to go in to say something. You can go in and you said this too, Amy, but that you can just go in to learn. You can just show up and sit in the meeting and listen to what's happening. You don't have to have a prepared speech or say something. And you probably shouldn't say something if you don't really understand what's happening, but, but you could get to that point where you say something at a meeting.
Right. And for the longest time we've, you know, as this COVID stuff happened and people figured out, whoa, what's going on? We have a lot of people who are angry at what politicians have done and what government has done. But I still always ask the question, but what meetings have you shown up to? What, where have you been involved to hold them accountable, right? Because if you leave someone alone in a room and tell them not to do anything wrong, you know, it's, it's one of those things where it's like, well, you have to be willing to go somewhere and do something to actually hold people accountable in a positive way, but don't just complain about it and then say, oh, well, I can't believe that the government acts this way or that these people, oh, well, okay. When you show up and when you start to learn the process, then we can, you know, we can have a conversation. So let's go into Scottsdale specifically. What types of issues have you been seeing in your school district?
Well, I think they're the same issues that we're seeing across the country, across the state, right? We are seeing that most of the time, those of us with conservative values are the minorities on the boards. And so there's not a whole lot we can get past. As for us in Scottsdale, we are most of the time a three, two board on certain things. I mean, many times we are a five, zero on things, but maybe some of the controversial things, we are a three, two. And so as are many districts, so we are kind of up against not being able to make a lot of change. And I think that's difficult. We are seeing that make a difference in what curriculum is still being passed. For example, in our meeting last week, we had a social emotional learning program, which is called Second Step. They have a middle school project, which is, this is national. And I've been following this for a couple of years. So I've been asking to review it, never been allowed. It was on our agenda and then it's like, I still wasn't provided the opportunity to review it and we still have to vote on it. So we're expected to make decisions with really being really informed or educated on, on the things. And so I think people don't really realize that necessarily. They think we have a lot more information or receive more information than what we do. And we're expected to, to vote a certain way. And it's, it's unfortunate, but that's why it's so important. Because if you have, you know, the opposite where we're more of the majority, we wouldn't be passing some of these curriculums through because we would, you know, not vote them in. We just, I just think it's huge that across the country, across Arizona, in Scottsdale, we're being asked to prove things that we, we don't even know what we're proving necessarily. We haven't seen some of this. And why, why not? That's my question. Why?
Why?
Why shouldn't, yeah.
Why are we not allowed to see this or why are we not? But a good thing is like having, I'm a, I'm a mom. I mean, I ran for school board because I do believe our public schools, we need to be paying attention and stand up for the kids who are in there. I still have two kids left in our public schools, graduated four. So I think we do need to have parents also on the board who are invested, who have kids in the schools, who know what's going on and who are willing to stand up and make the hard votes and say, no, I'm sorry, I can't vote on this because I haven't been allowed to see it. I mean, this is simple, this is simple stuff. But if you check that out online, you can go and Second Step and look at it and it's very easy to see what they stand for and, and what this is. So it's quite the battle, but that's something that a community member can do. They can look at a board agenda very simply and go through and look. And if there's anything that seems interesting, we have Googled our fingertips, right? You can just start Googling and looking at the things that they have on their agenda. And it's very helpful for people to educate themselves on what, what is going on. Because school board members like myself, we can't, can't do it all. And it's important that people get involved and it's important people come up and do pub, public comment, ask questions and like you said, hold, hold us accountable.
And I think, I think we should probably pause a second and explain what social emotional learning is because I think it's a term that we've heard, but not necessarily understand what that is. So can you, can you just kind of nutshell explain what that is?
Well, that's, that's a great question because it's, yeah.
Because it's difficult. It means a lot of different things.
It does mean a lot of things and then we're still trying to figure that out, right?
Kind of a buzzword right now.
It is a buzzword and it's something that's always kind of been in our schools to a certain level. But if you look at this, this project in particular, it says right on there that it's transformative SEL. And that's what we're looking for. What is transformative, social emotional learning? And if you look that up, you could see it goes into all of the cultural, social justice, all the things that we don't want in our schools.
Right.
Is, is what that seems to, to be. So for me, my two younger sons, we grad, we adopted from foster care. They, they do need some social, social emotional help. So I'm not against that, but I'm, I am for parents teaming with the school to decide what that looks like and what's best. Because honestly, the stuff my youngest son has been provided at school has actually been detrimental to him because it opens deep wounds for him and that they can't necessarily close, you know, during a school day. Like he wants to go to school and forget about some of these things. And when we introduce these things into school, it's inappropriate because kids have all different backgrounds and situations. And so the only way that I think social emotional learning should be happening is with parental involvement. And that's what I'm fighting for with this program that we did just adopt three to two, is that parents are notified and they have the option to opt out of this. So that's, that's my take on it. And that's, that's where I stand and, and want to see that. But it's helpful if people come to the meetings and also like I said, learn. And if people can't come to meetings, a lot of these are recorded. We have a YouTube channel for our school district. You can go back and watch every meeting, four hours long or whatever it is, right? And I know they're boring, a lot of it's boring, but it's on purpose. So if you just go to the end, most of the meets at the end, right? They hope they wear everybody down. So no one listens to the, you know, like that vote was our last vote of the night. Like this is not by accident.
Right.
And we, we have someone here at our church that goes to a different school district board meetings, but she has said a similar thing, that, you know, you kind of have to stick it out because they want people to leave. They don't want people to, to stick around to the end. And that's when they get to all the juicy stuff, right? At the end that they, and they're hoping everybody gets bored and leaves before then.
Yeah. And we have to, to realize, you know, we'll, we'll see people pop in and it's like they're checking a box and then they leave. It's like, well, okay, that's really not helpful either, right? We're not talking about just going so you can say you went.
Right.
But like commit, invest, it matters. When I'm sitting up there too, I can see, I can see you and it matters whether you say a word or not, knowing you're there to support and knowing you're there to learn and educate yourself and just link arms is huge.
Right. So let's talk about that for a minute, leaving public comments. So at a school board meeting, you know, I kind of want to give people a picture that haven't been there before to, you know, they all, I'm sure are somewhat similar. So you have a room, you've got the board members in there, behind their desk or whatever it's called. And they go through their agenda, they go through all the different things they're going to talk about and, and their budget and whatever else is on the agenda for that day, right? So what happens after that and what is the, the public comment process, at least in Scottsdale?
Yep. So it's different. Every district is different. And ours is at the beginning. So our public comment is pretty early on. After superintendent comments, we open up for public comment. We are two minutes per person. We've, we've got all these rules and, and things, but yeah, people have to show up early, sign up. There's, when you walk in the door, there's places or like iPads for them to sign up to speak. You don't really have to say, I mean, who you are. I mean, you say your name, but you don't have to go into a big, long story. So you don't need to be afraid, you know, of exposing yourself or your situation. I know a lot of people worry about that, you know, with if they have kids in the schools or if they have business or things, but you can just go up and say, I'm John and I'm a taxpayer and here's what I think. And you have two minutes in our district. Many districts have three minutes, others have one minute. I know other districts have put it to the last thing, which I think is terrible. You know, you know, at the end of the meeting, so they know people aren't going to hang out for four hours and, and wait. But you can find that also usually online on the district website. But the best thing to do is befriend a school board member, right? I mean, get to know, want to build relationship with somebody because then you can easily get information and they can help you too. I mean, that's what we're here for is to help, help the community.
And most, most districts, I mean, I've, I've looked through some of them and some of them are easier to figure out than others. They're, some of them are more user friendly than others. But along with the information about the meetings, they also have the school board members listed and how to contact them. So an email address or whatever the contact is, sometimes it's just internal within the system that it sends an email. But that, that you can find out who your school board members are and how to contact them so that you can build those relationships. And the elections for those are typically staggered. I think that's pretty much across the board. They don't, they don't have where you'll have an election and every single school board member will be up for election. If it's three, you know, if it's a five, then every other year, every other election, it's three and then two. And so it just kind of alternates the numbers so that it, you still have veterans that have been on the board already, even if the people get voted off the board. You have the new people come in and there are other people who've already been on the board. So that's pretty typical too. But you can find all that information on, and when they're, I believe usually it says when their term is up and when it started and all of that information as well on there.
So with all of this type of stuff, we're talking about curriculum and these meetings, I'm sure that things, and we've seen it on the internet a lot, these school board meetings, they can get heated with the people that are there, being very passionate about what they believe, what they think, you know, talking to the board members. How do you in this type of setting, you know, speak truth and say, hey, here's the facts or here's what's going on? But how do you do that in love without frankly, getting angry or getting stressed or, you know, because I'm sure those situations are not easy to always navigate?
Yeah, I think that's huge, right? Is, it can get very contentious up there on the board when it just can with the public commentators, with votes that are going on. It's very difficult even on my, the board I'm on, to even have the freedom to speak sometimes, you know, I'm shut down if they don't like what I'm saying or, or whatever. It can be very difficult. But I also know that I'm there to, to shine light, right? And I'm not there to fight with people. I'm there to stand for truth and stand for, for, for our values and stand for everyone to be able to go to public school and for it to be a safe place for all. I mean, does inclusive really mean Christians are part of that? You know, I've asked our superintendent that.
Right.
Right to his face because that's how I feel. You know, does our value of inclusion, does that include people of faith? Because if it does, then we need to be looking at certain things, you know, curriculum, whatever it is that we're bringing into our schools, because that doesn't align for many Christian families.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. So how can we within this setting, I know that teachers are kind of right in the middle of this. We love our teachers, we want to support our teachers. And then we also see a lot of things coming out on the internet about teachers that need to be removed completely. And that's happened a lot in Arizona too. So how can we empower the good teachers? How can we help them and support them?
Yeah, that's one of the reasons I ran too, is, you know, I love teachers and teaming with them. I mean, they are a part of, a huge part of teaming with me, with my children in the school. So like from the beginning on the campaign, I've always said, I support teachers and anyone who's had my children know that. And I think we, we have to do that because there are many great, great teachers. So if we have issues, we need to just be able to discuss it, show them. A lot of times these issues are made bigger than if we just handled it one-on-one. I also am very big on curriculum transparency. I think we need that. I think that's just where we're at now, that bill didn't pass. Can we pass policy in our local school districts? I think we can. And work with our, our teachers that need to work with parents to, to tell them what is going, what videos are they going to be showing, right? This isn't so we can fight, but it is because I have a right to what my child is learning. And I need to be, you need to be okay with me saying, you know what? No, that's not appropriate. If I feel something isn't appropriate, we don't need to fight about it, but like we need to be able to work together. And if, you know, if we don't align at all, then I need to find different teachers or even a different school, which I happen to do personally. You know, drive my, my youngest to a different school in our district that more aligns with our values instead of just fighting with people, which is not, which is not healthy. But there are a lot of teachers that are looking to the school board members to support them. And that goes beyond politics. I mean, I think that's why this is nonpartisan and, and it should be because there are a lot of decisions that need to be made for them, for our children, that really have nothing to do with, with politics. It's allocating money properly, making sure they have the support they need and getting parents involved on a positive note. And so I'm, I'm very happy to be there representing our teachers and having conversations with them and trying to understand what they're faced, faced with. And because of the relationships I do have, a lot of, I hear from a lot of teachers, I hear from administrators. And so I think if we approach being a school board member in that way, where we're approachable, we're here to stand strong, right? But we're also here to, to help. People are happy, I think. I think that they finally feel like someone is listening and we're not there for political reasons necessarily. We're actually there to make sure our schools are the strongest they can be.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that's great. And I was a public school teacher. So yeah, I had a, I have master's degree in education and I was a public school teacher before. I, it was like 2000, I think that before 2000, that was my last year in public school. But, and I come from a family of teachers. So no one goes into teaching for the money. She just don't make the money. So I do think there are a lot of teachers out there who really, they have a heart for kids. They feel like they're called, for lack of a better word, to education, to support the kids, to support the families. And there are a lot of Christian teachers out there. I, my, one of my daughter's best friends is a, is a teacher in a public high school in a different district from yours. But it's can be challenging because they're being told they, they have these in-service days where they're, a lot of garbage is, you know, tried to be shoved down their throats and the teachers unions are telling them all, the teachers unions are very political.
Very.
They're very political and they're very far left. So they, they push a lot of stuff that is not what we believe. You know, it's not, it's not biblical and it's not conservative. And so if you're a teacher in a, fortunately, we are a right to work state, so you don't have to be part of the teachers union if you're a teacher. I know that's not the case in a lot of other states where you have teachers that are forced to be part of teachers unions that are very antagonistic, not just, not just that their beliefs are different, but they're antagonistic to biblical beliefs or to Christian beliefs. Where you were talking about that a little bit ago about, okay, is, is Christianity one of the things that we're going to be inclusive about? Are you allowed to have beliefs that, that line up with the Bible? As a student, as a teacher, as an employee, whether you're working in a lunchroom or at the, in the front office or at the district office or at whatever level that they're working, can my beliefs, am I allowed to have these beliefs? So it's really, a lot of teachers are in a difficult place. We saw that come out a lot, especially during COVID, where you had teachers that didn't want schools to shut down. They thought they should stay open, but they were being pushed up against by the, especially the unions and a lot of the government that was trying to force certain things down their throat. And so it's good to have relationships with those school board members.
It is, it is. And yeah, I've, I've seen a lot of positive from that. And I've been on now for, what now? A year, I don't know, a year and a few months here and really seen the relationships grow now that they've seen me on the dais and, and see how I vote. And I do, do stand up for them. And I'm not sure they, you know, knew for sure if that was going to be true or not true. And I just think it's just sticking to our word and who we are, who I am authentically. I mean, I authentically love kids and love teachers and I do love our schools. And I do hope that we can turn things around where people can come back to our schools, where people don't continue to leave. But we'll see.
Yeah.
And dais, you learned a word there. That's the word for the table.
I was gonna say like, wait a second.
You were talking about the table there. That's the, so word for the day, Allison.
Word for the day. I like it. Love new words. So let's talk about too, so how do parents fit into this? How can parents help? But like, I mean, we can talk about them showing up at board meetings. I mean, how does all of this go together where parents feel like they can have a voice in this whole process?
Well, we got to remember, parents are busy. I mean, when they're raising their kids and, and smaller kids, they just, a lot of times don't have the bandwidth or the space in their lives to go to school board meetings, to pay attention. And I think that's why it's important, those of us who are older, those of us whose kids are grown, you know, kind of fill in that gap for them and can learn and do all the, you know, the heavy lifting and then educate them as well and bring them along. Because it is hard on a Tuesday night for, for, you know, parents, working parents to, to get there, although it is very important, I think that they, that they do. I wish I had been paying attention because we may not have been gotten into the predicament that we're trying to dig ourselves out of, right? If we were paying attention. So I think if people just keep one eye open, one ear open at all times. And then if we as community members surround them and make sure that they are being educated and invited in and know that we are, you do have school board members that are looking out for you.
Right.
That are fighting for you. And I also love, because I hear from parents a lot and they'll show me an assignment they got or they'll ask me to ask the questions if they're afraid. And, and that's why I'm here. And that's why I got voted in and so I can be a voice.
Yeah, I think that's great. And I also think, I, I tell parents all the time, just like we put pressure on different legislators or whoever to, this is what we want you to do. We also need to show them that we're thankful when they do stand up for us, you know, because there is, there is a lot of pressure that comes with your position. And there is, I mean, I'm sure there's times where you're just like, okay, like gotta get through this, right? And so having encouragement from parents, teachers, whoever's involved in the process of saying, just like you said, thank you for standing up for me. And you know, these people are coming up and talking to you. That is something that can help keep our elected officials going in the positive direction because I know that I'm sure it can be a lot, so.
It is, it is a lot, but I'll be in the grocery and people will stop me and really, people are really thankful because they know it's a thankless, yeah, it's a thankless job. It is a volunteer position, right? I mean, it is a lot. You put up with a lot. It is very controversial right now. You know, my name shows up in the newspaper after every meeting and that can be good or bad. But I do feel very encouraged by our community. And I do feel that they are paying more attention and that they will be paying even more attention when it comes to the November election.
And I think, you know, you just touched on something that was a little thing, but talking about running into people in the grocery store. And again, that kind of puts a nail in what we were talking about before, about it being very local level. You're not going to run into your US Senator at the grocery store, right? I mean, but you are going to run into school board members at the grocery store. I mean, you could.
Yeah.
So it's very local, very personable, much, much easier to have access to people. And I think it's also important too, to, to say that I think the school board elections are difficult sometimes for people that are used to just looking for the letter next to somebody's name, right? They look for an R or a D and they try to decide, well, this is a nonpartisan election. There are several that are that way. The school board is one of them. And so it doesn't tell you what party they're from deliberately. So it does involve a lot more research to look and see, okay, is this person aligned with how I believe? It's not as simple as just the letter next to their name. Um that they have to, you have to do a little bit more research to understand, are they fighting for the things that I want them to be fighting for? Or are they trying to push an agenda that I don't want in the schools?
That's right. And we also have to understand that um to be very careful with just taking words off a website that um we're we're seeing. Um you know, more the progressive liberals coming in with conservative talking points this time, right? Um so it's it's going beyond what's said on the website and asking people, talking to people, do you know these people? Um you know, and really getting to know your school board member, they they know.
Right.
Who the people are that are running.
Yeah, because a lot of time there are those catchphrases that they know are gonna make people think that they're doing one thing when they're really doing something else. And so, yeah, if you're not paying attention.
I think that's a great, so kind of going, this goes into my next question too. But if you are not voting right now and you are anywhere, literally, the first place that I want you to start is go to your closest school board meeting and figure out what's going on locally, right? And you know, we have a high percentage of Christians that do not vote. And that's something that we're really concerned about. We really want to change that because we believe it's our duty to vote. It's our, it's our civic duty. So why is it important for Christians to vote? I want to hear both of your perspectives on this. So why, why do you think it's important for Christians to vote?
It's it's vital. I mean, it's vital that we vote. You know, I used to maybe be this same way. I wasn't political. I don't consider myself still political. I just consider myself living out my values, right? It just happens to be in the political realm now. And I just think that we cannot set it out. I mean, if Christians do not stand up and and vote their values, we're in big trouble. I mean, you know, it's just, I don't even know what to say about it. It's just vital and we're in a time and a place where Christians cannot set it out. Um they've got to at least vote, if not get involved on a much bigger level.
Yeah, I completely agree.
And I love the way that you just said that about it. It's you're you're living your values in that arena, right? And that's what we're called to do. We've talked about it before here about being salt and light in the public arena. And so whether that's at your workplace, whether that's in the halls of government and voting and participating in government is one of those areas where we're supposed to be salt and light. And there's so much at stake in school boards when you have places that the sex ed curriculum or the the social emotional learning, the um when you're talking about um uh some of the, like the Black Lives Matter stuff that was being pushed into schools, into the trans issue. All of these different things that that, what is going on in my local school? What are they teaching kids? And if we're not paying attention, I mean, we've seen, I think that was one of the blessings that happened out of twenty twenty and out of COVID was people's eyes were opened as to what kinds of stuff was going, was going on. Um and so it's important that we have a voice in there. And that is one of the easiest ways for us to have a voice is to know who we're voting for. Vote, it happens, you know, a couple of times every few years that you have, you know, a primary and general, some of the special elections. It's not a lot of time and effort to figure out who stands with you, who whose values align with yours and vote for those people so that they can then do the work in office.
Right, right. And that's a great point you both are making is that we're not called to back down. We're called to stand with our armor that God has given us, right? So it's, it's not saying, I can't control this, so I'm gonna step out of it. And that's what I see so many Christians doing is, well, I don't think it's gonna make a difference. We're just gonna wait for Jesus to come and hope that everything goes well until we get here. But no, we are called to stand. And if you're not willing to be challenged, then your beliefs might not be as solid as you think they are. We we need to be willing to to stand for those things. And that's how you build your faith. That's how you build that stronger foundation is when you're challenged, we can use the word of God and say, okay, what does the Bible say about this? How should I address this? And that's um, that's why we're here. So thank you so much, Amy, for being on the show today. And thank you for listening to Into the Fire powered by Dream City Church.
You can listen to this podcast on Apple and Spotify and follow us on social media. Find all the info on the show notes. To learn more about Dream City Church, visit our website at dreamcitychurch.us. Thanks for listening.